Welcome. My name is Christine Vitale. I'm the Chair of the Fairfield Board of Education. And I'm joined tonight by my fellow board members. And this is the first time that we are holding this event. Tonight is the evening of our Student Recognition Awards. So at 7 o'clock, we're going to be presenting the Superintendent Awards, the Cape Awards, the Board of Education Awards. But there has been so many wonderful accomplishments that have happened on the field, on the court, on the stage. Typically, we would invite students to attend our Board of Ed meetings so the board could recognize you and we could get a photo op. But we figured, why have you come to a board meeting, especially with all the COVID mitigation strategies that have been in place this year? Why not gather together and celebrate you at once? So thank you for making the time tonight to join us. I know a lot of people may have other things going on, so we'll try to be quick. The way it's going to go, we're going to recognize each team, group. Have you come up for a photo op? And we'll send you on your way after that. To get the evening started, we thought a fitting beginning would be a performance by the Fairfield Ludlow Chamber Orchestra. So we'll start the evening with them. Thank you so much for that performance. I'm now going to turn the mic over to Robert Hughes, District's Music Coordinator. Before I do, I just would like to congratulate him and the entire music department. Recently, they were recognized for being one of the best communities for music education in the country. This places the Fairfield Music Education Program within the top 10, 5% of the entire country, which is a great recognition that we are very proud of. And as you can see by the performance tonight, quite worthy and deserving. And with that, I will hand the mic over to Mr. Hughes.
Good evening and many thanks to the Fairfield Ludlow High School Chamber Orchestra with their fantastic performance of Tchaikovsky's Serenade for String Orchestra in C Major. Let's give them another round of applause. Wonderful performance under the direction of Suki Ryan. The Chamber Orchestra is one of many shining examples of the high-quality musicianship on display throughout all of Fairfield Public Schools. And it's that same quality of musicianship that brings us here today to recognize some of the most accomplished and outstanding musicians in our high school music programs. This year, we had 79 students from Ludlow and Ward High Schools selected to participate in the Connecticut Music Educators Association's Western Regional Festival, and we had 24 students participate in the All-State Festival. Both festivals are composed of the best musicians from either the western region of Connecticut, or in the case of All-State, all of Connecticut. Selection into these programs is dependent on sufficiently high scores determined from a rigorous audition process. At this time, I would like to recognize the students selected for both the Western Regional Festival and the All-State Festival. Please stand when your name is called. And I do apologize, we have a couple concerts going on tonight, namely Ward High School, so many students couldn't be here. But we will still recognize them and their accomplishments. So from Fairfield Ward High School, Zach Sullivan, Elizabeth Fletcher, Grace Terrantick, Sophia Pollacks, Elliot Shunk, Alexi Benson, Evan Papa George, Nolan Tierney, Adam Giglietti, Cole Grineer, Noel Abu, Samantha Hoffman, Mary Montini, Samantha Renzulli, Coleman Connolly, Aiden Kopola, River Peterson, Gillian Appel, Hazel Foley, Helen Hen, Charlotte Lavelle, Sophia Luna, Gian Lorenzo Tapitas, Jenny Moore, Jessica Vora, Amy Shervansky, Kate Friedman, Anya Garb, Senia Sundar, Sebastian Rodriguez, Patrick Cooney, Colin Farley, and Paul Sussman. From Fairfield Ludlow High School, we have Akash Anand, Mira Bakshi, Victoria Beniston, Artem Bogatov, Juliette Boots, Shagun Bathra, Miles Bradley, Grace Camara, Ethan Cardy, Sylvie Semino, Andrew Corbett, Grace Coyne, Nate Kramer, Danielle Curtis, Owen Daly, William Depiano, Greta Evan, Esme Fagan, Sam Frank, Kyle Gerziak, Emma Gildersleeve, Sophia Graney, Eric Guo, Amelia Hawkins, Mark Jelku, Lauren G., Sophia Malik, James Maseo, Alex Moore, Som Neen, Alexander Parent, Sharithma Paris, Michael Segal, Vincenza Silence, Nicholas Slanko, Sarah Sullivan, Charlie Tavalado, Isabel Toma, Ethan Wallace, Dustin Walters, Lucas Weaver, Simon Weber, Lilia Weinstein, Lydia Wilson Taylor, Christopher Ewen, and Christina Ewen. Would you please join us down here for a photo? Many thanks to the entire Fairfield community for their enduring support of the arts.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We're going to move on to Recognition of Excellence for High School Athletes. We're going to start with Fairfield Ludlow High School for Fall Sports. Can I ask Dr. Hattis to come up and share the accomplishments of those students at Ludlow?
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. We also just wanted to take a quick minute in recognition of, you've heard the tragic events of what's happening in Texas, and I know it's something that hits really close to home here in Connecticut. So just thought we'd say a quick word in recognition of those families and pray that the community can find some peace. So we're here for a happy occasion. And the accomplishments of these young people, whether in music or sports, is just something that I think, you know, as adults, when we think back to our time in school, we didn't quite have some of the resources that you guys have. But at the same time, I can't remember anybody accomplishing the heights that you guys accomplished. You are truly amazing, and so it's an honor to be here. I've invited Ms. Barry Rayben, who's the House Principal of Wright House here, because the first recipient happens to also be someone that might be recognized a little later in the evening, and she's going to be introducing him then. So I thought it would be nice for her to just start with that. Ms. Rayben?
Thank you. Our first Recognition of Excellence for High School Athletes goes to our cross-country FCAC champion, Nate Kramer, who is currently, like right this minute, running his two-mile race for the spring championship. So we might hear exactly how he goes by the time he comes for the next award, if he makes it in time. But he has been an amazing athlete, and we congratulate him for that.
Nate was also on the previous page for the Western Regional. So next up is the cross-country FCAC, oh, sorry, the swim class double-L state champion for the 100-yard butterfly. And if you've ever seen this race in the Olympics, it is fast, it is furious, and it is highly competitive because it's over so quickly. And we are so proud of Kate Murray. So Kate, are you here tonight? Okay, now moving on to winter sports. First up, we're going to mention the cheerleading squad who won both the FCAC and State CIAC co-ed champions. So we're very proud of our cheerleading team. Any members of the cheerleading squad here tonight as well? Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Knowing them, they're probably practicing, because I swear, I think they practice year-round. Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't see you guys. Sorry, come on up here, come on. I thought you were going to stand up when I said, is anyone here? Come on up, we're going to take a quick picture. As these guys well know, they have endured an incredible amount of adversity, and so I just would welcome, Coach, if you want to say any words or anything, please feel free.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alex Reinhardt. I want to thank this great group of kids. As we all know, this is a pretty small community here, so to have such great athletes here is really truly a blessing in so many sports that we have, particularly some of these kids I've coached for seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 years. So it's great to see everybody in a group just supporting each other and couldn't be more proud of their accomplishments. So thank you, everybody, for recognizing us here. Oh, yeah. We have here to the front left, I'll just go down the front row, we have Destiny Diaz, Lindsay Taylor, Graham Nielsen, Mia Senator, Thea Ventura, Katie Leonardo. Oh, you guys can raise your hands, Katie Leonardo. Noelle Amien, Kate Ruggiero, Addie Kane, Isabel Fuhrer, Susanna Sharon, Kayla Goby, Thala Petricelli, and Madison Gonzalez. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys, for continuing the tradition of excellence and cheerleading at our school. You do an amazing job. If you've ever seen on the Netflix, is it, you know, just a cheer, gives you a little sense, these guys are right on that level. Amazing stuff. So moving on, we have boys indoor track. Do we have any of our members of our boys indoor track here tonight? I'll look carefully around. Okay. So I'd like to announce Steve Didelberg as FCAC and Class Double-L pole vault champ, state champ, and Tyler Bartlett as a Class L double-L state champion as well. Now, I'm going to invite up Coach and his team for the girls indoor track FCAC champions, Coach Matt McCloskey and the girls indoor track team.
I just want to thank the board for having us here tonight. This is our girls indoor track team. We were able to win the indoor girls track FCAC championship this year. Also, Anna Keely was FCAC and Class Double-L state champion for the 1600 and 3200, and the New England championship, and the New England champion for the mile with one shoe. Tia Stapleton, who was not able to come tonight, was our FCAC champ in the high jump and the Class Double-L champ in the long jump. I just, we had a tremendous year. It was great to be able to get back onto the track after not having a season last year. So I give the girls a lot of credit for coming out all of last season and just practicing, and everything paid off. So the FCAC champions were Tia Stapleton, Kayla Patterson, Aaron Kesser, Nadine Giuffremo, Coco Norman, Charlotte Phillips, Annalise Bentley, Haley Martenson, Maya Kramer, Grace Moriarty, Isabella Kramer, Anna Keely, Margaret Zano, Jordan Stein, Claire Fuchs, Emily Nolan, Sophia Morgan, Melanie Long, Mia Girvich, Kaylee Whackerman, Colleen Holliday, and Anna Burgess. Thank you.
Great job, guys. Next, I'd love to bring up Coach Kim Longabucco and Coach Beth Cerny, along with our Class L state champions, our gymnastics team.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm going to introduce the girls first, and then I'll tell you a little bit about our season. Tonight with us, we have seniors and captain Ava Golding, senior and captain Isabella Factora, senior Esme Fagan, senior Katie Turello, and senior Lila Vogel. Our juniors, Jane Luge and Julia Gove. Sophomores, Abigail Cerny, Tori Schreiber, and Emma Senator. And freshmen, Kaitlyn Benson and Olivia Luricchia. This group was Class L state champions, and I do have to mention, the last two years have been FCAC champions during COVID, when we weren't able to recognize students as much. We had seven individuals qualify to compete at the state opens, and four individuals move on to compete at New England's. This past weekend, we had four of our seniors, Ava Golding, Isabella Factora, Katie Turello, and Esme Fagan, compete for Team Connecticut in Fort Myers Beach, Florida, on the Senior National Showcase event. Ava Golding also qualified for the event finals at the Senior National Showcase in the Balance Beam. So a very successful season and several years in a row. Congratulations.
Dr. Longabucco's story about being nationals this weekend just is a great reminder of how even long after the high school sports seasons are over, these incredible athletes are competing year-round, finding ways to hone their skills and still be excellent students at the same time, maintain all the rigors, being in a rigorous high school and being high-level athletes too. So it's amazing accomplishments. Next, love to see if Dylan Sherman, are you here, Dylan? Dylan was our FCAC champion at 126 pounds in wrestling. Come on up. Come on up, Coach, sorry, didn't see you over there.
Thank you. Either one? Well, first I'd like to congratulate Dylan on a great season. On top of being an exceptional wrestler, he's also carries over a 4.0 grade point average, and he's a good role model for the rest of the team. He's our first FCAC champion since 2016 at the school. He was also third and the Class Double-L state champion. He was 34 wins against five losses, three of those coming at a state tournament. He's our team MVP, and he's really getting it done. He's a building block for the future of our program. And he too is a year-round kid, really getting it done. So I'd like to congratulate Dylan, he's doing the work. Thanks, buddy. Your mom's just taking a picture.
Mr. Cavanna, I think it's appropriate that you would come up as well. And you're still here? There you are. Coach Q, are you here too? Come on. Coach Quircone from, who's now retired, but stayed on to coach when we were so lucky for our Ward and Ludlow co-op ski team, girls ski team, who once again are state champions. And we'll let Coach Q tell you about all of their accomplishments over the years. Come on up, girls ski team.
Okay, so the girls' ski team finished the season with another state championship at Mount Suddington earlier this year. In a 12-team field, the girls' ski team defeated Ridgefield by 5.5 seconds to take the state title again. This is the ninth state championship in the last 10 years for the girls' ski team. Also, in the regular season, this girls' team took first place in the division with a record of 54-1. It was a great finish for us this season with a very talented team. I would like to thank the board for inviting us tonight, and some of the team are not here, but because of playing for spring sports and the like, and, but I'd like to recognize the girls that are here. Amelia Kerlik, Kara Fleming, Kara Lorian, Matilda Nichols, Miranda Broad, Rosie Mayer, Gracie McEldownee, Abby Upton, and Caitlin Chardio.
Good evening. My name is Paul Cavanna. I have the great privilege of being the principal of Fairfield Ward High School, and I'm thrilled to invite Meg Barnow and Jessica Amaralt to please come join me on stage. Meg and Jessica are two outstanding student athletes at Fairfield Ward High School. In a minute, I will speak about the specific sports that they, we're celebrating them tonight, but I just want to talk about them also as people. They are hard-working individuals who care deeply about their school and care deeply about their sport, and they make us at Ward very, very proud. They are two student athletes who really articulate the Ward acronym, and I am so proud to be here tonight to acknowledge them. So Meg had the opportunity of being the Class L state champ in the high jump, which is a tremendous accomplishment, and Jessica, the FCAC state champ in pole vault. Please join me in recognizing these two outstanding student athletes. Oh, you want me in the picture? Oh, thank you. I'm proud and honored to introduce Mr. Jason Shaughnessy and our wrestling student athletes. Before they come on up, I would like to acknowledge Mr. Shaughnessy. He is going to be inducted into the FCAC Hall of Fame later on this month, and we're so proud of him and his accomplishments. Please, a round of applause.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Board of Ed for having us here today, and all the administrators and athletes for coming. I think it's great to recognize the kids and make them feel very special. I'd like to introduce three very special athletes for our team this year, who were exemplary student athletes and performers this season. First freshman, Ben Zuckerman. Ben had a record of 40 and 7, second-team all-FCAC, Class Double-L state champion, fifth in the state open, and fifth in New England's. Your hair looks fine, Ben. Second, Lucas Coleman. Lucas is a junior, 42 and 5, FCAC champion, first-team all-FCAC, Class Double-L state champion, and third in the state open. And this last athlete, I have a lot to say. He's got a very long list. I think we'll be out of here before 7:00. But Will Ebert, senior captain, he was undefeated this year at 51-0, 153 career wins, FCAC champion, most outstanding wrestler, Class Double-L state champion, most outstanding wrestler, state open champion, New England champion, and did not allow a single point. FCAC Wrestler of the Year, Connecticut Wrestler of the Year, Senior National Champion, Dave Schultz High School Award of Excellence. It's one of the top honors across the country, and he'll be attending in wrestling at Binghamton next year. Thank you.
Just before we conclude, and I turn it back over to our Board of Education Chairwoman, I'd just like to wish our baseball team good luck. They're going for their second FCAC championship on Thursday night versus West Hill in Stanford, so go Ward. Thank you.
It's such small print. I missed our great gymnastics team. My apologies. Coach?
So the Ward gymnastic team had one of their most successful seasons ever. I'd like, we don't have a large representation today, but Julia Steele, Kaya Vedas, and Emma C. Johnson, if you can come down with me. We broke a lot of school records, both as a team and individually. The gymnastic team was FCAC champions. We placed second at states, third at state opens, and fourth place in the New England championship, which was held this year at Ward High School. Emma Johnson was first-place FCAC champion, second-place open champion, second place, and came in first place at the New England championship on Balance Beam.
Before they smile for their picture, I just want to acknowledge them. It's very difficult, you know, building, sustaining a program, and coaching these student athletes have really started to put our gymnastic team on the mat, and that's something that's really important to me, and I thank them and congratulate them for how they represent Ward. Great job.
I want to thank everybody again for being here, our head principals for presenting, all the coaches for presenting tonight, and for your work and support of our students throughout the year, especially over these last two years. It really, it's very exciting and heartwarming, I guess is the word, right now, just to see you all and to know that these programs have moved forward after some very tough years. It just speaks to your dedication, your resilience, your skill, and your heart, and you're role models to us all. So thank you. And with that, I'm just going to ask everybody for one big last round of applause. And we hope to see you underclassmen here next year, and good luck to all of our seniors on your next adventure.